Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular city council meeting to order. I mean that the hour of 6:00 PM is coming on. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. We have Alderman Patton that would like to participate remotely. Alderman Patton, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Would you like to state your reason for your remote participation?
Yes, Mayor Pro Temp.
Say that again?
I'm out of town for work.
Okay, he's out of town for work. Okay. Can I have a motion to allow Alderman Patton to participate remotely, please?
Second.
Second. Second. Roll call, please.
Navarrete?
Yes. 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 All right. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is presented by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its law.
Can I have Pastor Stokes to the microphone to give us a word of prayer, please?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Let us pray. Lord, here we are, another opportunity under your grace and mercy to look to you for guidance, for help. We thank you for the ability to come to you and we praise you tonight because you hear us and answer when we call. We ask that you will be with us and look on us and bless these that are in attendance tonight. Look on us favorably and continue to keep your hand of blessing upon us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there any member from the public that would like to make a comment? Please step to the microphone, state your name.
George Grunscheck, Freeland Avenue, Calumet City. Last Saturday evening, my wife was in a fairly substantial accident, 163rd and Burnham, the Burnham Raceway. Anyway, she is fine. She's got a nice souvenir bruise across her body from the seatbelt. And on a side note, to anybody that's listening, if you don't use your seatbelt when you drive, there's a substantial possibility you could be an idiot. But anyway, my wife fared much better than our car, but I'm not up here to tell you that. I'm up here to tell you that for the rest of the evening I was with her, she talked obsessively, not obsessively, but continually about the professionalism and the helpfulness of both the police and the fire personnel that were on the scene. So professionalism is a great thing, but if it could almost give the idea that it's just, you know, strictly by the rules and it could be a cold thing, but this was hardly the case. They did all the right things and they did them in a way that made her feel comfortable, relaxed. They seemed to understand. They were professional with a great deal of empathy. A lot of times Cal City gets a bad rap, but for that evening, I was glad that I was from Cal City. Also, if he's out there, I don't know who it was, but before our people came to the accident scene, my two strangers to her came up and asked, "Is there anything I can do for you?" And she said, "Would you please hold my hand?" And he did till our people, our personnel, came. So whoever that gentleman is, thank you. You know, and sometime we get the fights in our society and our government, both local and national, but yet the world is populated with a ton of good people. So anyway, I'd like to thank the firefighters and the police department. Anytime I've had to deal with them, which gratefully, I haven't done too often, but they've been great. So thanks to the fire department and the police department. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charlotte Perez-Raid. I live at 892 Buffalo Avenue, Calumet City, Illinois. First of all, I want to say I'm proud of my city. I'm proud of Calumet City. My family comes from Michigan and they're proud of Calumet City. I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but I have been calling. I have a problem with our garbage pickup. They're always leaving garbage down the streets. I've called Public Works and I know, you know, everybody's busy, there's almost so much they can do, but if we can just be mindful, because everybody is complaining about it. They just waste, I mean, I go and pick it up because I don't want my street and my neighbor's streets to look like that. So, you know, if you guys just can kind of maybe talk to them and ask them, if they drop something, pick it up, you know?
Absolutely.
There was a whole, today, I have a picture, was a whole part of a car in the middle of the street. So I got out of my car and moved it and I shouldn't have been doing that because, you know, but I moved it just so that my neighbors won't run over it and tear their cars up. And it's, I put it on the side by the cemetery and it's over there now, so that's all I got to say. If they could just do a little bit better, we would appreciate it, okay? Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of May 9th and the regular city council meeting of May 9th?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. On Tuesday, May 21st, the joint Finance slash Ordinances and Resolutions Committee meeting was held, meaning the discussion was pertaining to invoice payments that were removed from the April 25th agenda. Also discussed were financial items removed from the April 25th Agenda Bill List. Committee made a recommendation to submit some items for council approval at a future meeting. Other items were tabled by committee, pending further review and additional information. The Finance Committee will hold a committee meeting in the future to further discuss pending financial items. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as public safety, just want to piggyback off of the comments that were made and to commend the services of our public safety department. They do provide stellar services to the community of Calumet City and I too just want to publicly thank them. So, thank you, gentlemen. Public Utilities, anybody have a report for Alderman Wilson? Oh, okay. I don't see... Somebody took my panties off. You don't see anybody? They don't see her waiting.
Mayor Pro Temp, I can text the link that I got to Alderman Wilson.
Okay, that's fine. But we're gonna keep the... Okay. All right. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. The Ordinance and Resolutions Meeting Committee had a joint committee meeting with the Finance this past Tuesday. At the meeting, we discussed the establishment of a credit card policy for employees and elected officials here in Calumet City. The committee did recommend a credit card policy that will show up on a future meeting agenda, and so we'll have more information on that once it's posted. Hopefully at the next meeting, it'll be on the agenda to be voted on by the entire council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Woman Wilson is now attempting to join the meeting, so can I have a... Alder Woman Wilson, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Would you like to state your reasoning for not being in attendance? Thank you.
As the chief visionary officer of my confidence, Monique should be promoted. I am away with a client doing legitimate work, so it is worth it.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to allow Alder Woman Wilson to join the meeting remotely?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It was motion by Alderman Smith, second by... Oh. Alderman Navarrete, and then second by... Okay. Motion by Smith, second by Alderman Navarrete to allow Alder Woman Wilson. Alder Woman Wilson, do you have a report for the Public Utilities? Oh, now she's going. Okay. All right. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderman Navarrete?
No report this evening, Mayor Pro Temp. Thank you.
All right. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Patton?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Pro Temp.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Smith.
Nothing this time, Mayor Pro Temp.
All right. City Council reports, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you. I would like to touch on some recent and upcoming community events. As we approach Memorial Day, a time of reflection and remembrance, I would like to express my gratitude to all veterans. I extend a thank you to the VFW for invitation to the Americanism Award Ceremony where members of our police and fire departments were recognized alongside students who have excelled in the essay contest. This event celebrated the values of patriotism, service, and civic responsibility and was a wonderful opportunity to honor those who serve and protect our community. In addition, I would like to recognize the Lions Club for their commitment to community service and their recent community award ceremony. The Lions Club plays a pivotal role in supporting local initiatives and recognizing individuals who make a difference in our community. On a personal note, I'm proud to congratulate my brother, George Navarrete, who was honored as this year's Teacher of the Year at the TF Tech Center. His dedication to education and his impact on students are truly remarkable and I'm thrilled to see his hard work and passion recognized. As we come together to celebrate these achievements and honor those who contribute to the betterment of our community, let us remember the true meaning of Memorial Day and pay tribute to the heroes who have sacrificed for our freedoms. Also, I want to announce that the VFW will be having their, every month, that there's five Wednesdays, they have a spaghetti dinner. So next Wednesday at the VFW, they'll be having a spaghetti dinner from 4:30 to 9:00 PM. So please come out and support the VFW and the veterans and enjoy some good food and it's always a great turnout, so again, that's next Wednesday at the VFW, 4:30 PM. That's all I had this evening, Mayor Pro Temp. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Woman Wilson. You can do your, your committee report and your city council report.
Okay, no committee report. City Council report, Second Ward. We also look out in a few days. We're going to spend a mass communication on our award meeting. We're gonna do something a little different. That's the summary. We also need all hands on deck for the Second Ward Initiative, which is being planned now by Tyree Douglas of the Second Ward. So it's gonna be something that we don't want to miss. The 23 Family Fund for our award, anyone in the community who wants to attend. Congratulations to my kids from TF North. Yesterday was such a phenomenal graduation, such a phenomenal commencement. I am proud of each and every one of the graduates and especially my 35th graduating. You all know who you are. Thank you to Public Works. They have begun putting out speed bumps throughout our ward. We had a great meeting with Public Works and the engineer regarding the next steps you, making sure the sidewalks are taken care of and the alleys. That work is really moving forward. If you need me to call, if you call me, and I haven't gotten back to you, that's because I went away. Please, thank you for your patience. Please call me, text me at 708-586-4990, or email me at monet@alderwomanwilson.com. That's M-O-N-E-T at alderwomanwilson.com. Thank you and congratulations to my family on the naming of the Birmingham Tidelord Airport in Alabama, after Fred Tidelord and the unveiling of the mural. Thank you to the governor of Alabama. That's all I have.
Thank you. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. One thing I forgot to mention during the Ordinance and Resolutions Committee, under New Business Items 1, 2, and 3, that relates to the adoption of our city codes. I want to thank the city attorneys that worked on this, the engineers, police and fire, and the Director of Inspection Services for finally getting us to the point where we can adopt these codes. I am asking the support of the Alderman on all three of those items. For the Third Ward Report, we are now forming the Planning Committee for the Back to School Picnic that happens every year in August. If you want to participate with that, contact my office, 708-891-8193. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as Fourth Ward, first and utter God makes all things possible. I want to wish everyone Happy Memorial Day and the June Team Celebration is June 22nd at the library, starting at 11:00 AM. Please come out and enjoy some entertainment, food, and fun. The next Ward Meeting, Third Ward Meeting, and Fourth Ward Meeting will be June 3rd at Downey Park at 6:30 PM. That's 300 Jeffrey Avenue. We are also planning a 5K Community Walk with several businesses as sponsors, so if there's any business or person that would like to participate in the planning and also being a sponsor, please contact the office at 708-891-8194 or 708-212-2240. Continue to call the board with your concerns and they will be addressed as expeditiously as possible. And also, I want to congratulate all the graduates. And that is it for the Fourth Ward. Fifth Ward, Alderman Tillman, I mean Alderman Gardner, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I would like to also congratulate the Class 2024 Lincoln Elementary School, TF North as well. Next, I would like to thank Public Works for installing speed bumps. I would like to thank Director Cheryl Tillman and Department of Building and Zoning for identifying a vacant property located in the ward that was reported to my office. They took care of the property, cleaned it up. Residents were happy. Also, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please continue to contact my office, let me know about vacant properties, overgrown vegetation. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Couple of things. First off, congratulations to all the graduates from TF North High School last night. I apologize for not being a big fan of her. Last night was the first of our summer award meetings, which was still a little long distance of the invitation that TF North to come to graduation, so thank everybody that came out for our first summer award meeting last night, there was a lot of conversation and lots of ideas that came out of that. I know that the weather starts to get nicer and work starts to get around town, everybody's working to keep calling for sidewalks, because they're trying to start setting, you know, sidewalk work being done. I had a meeting with our engineers this week and finalizing the sidewalk list for this summer. A little bit over budget, but hopefully one of my colleagues will let me, you know, the 650 hours that I went over budget, really help make sure that my entire sidewalk list gets finished here. Maybe that's submitted after this point will be added to the list for next year. And finally, along with that, the sidewalks, I had a long meeting with engineers about the alley that has been a problem between Wentworth and Canalworth, 100th and 165th Street. This alley is a huge problem, a huge flooding problem for a number of years now, and I will be asking the council very shortly to approve a fairly significant expenditure to have our engineers go out to it and tear that alley and rid of the old alley and add a couple of sewers in it because it's damaging the residents' property and it's a big issue. So to the residents on that block, both of our contractors that are calling, we are on it, we're working on it. We have the table for it. I'm going to ask my colleagues to approve the expense for it. That's all, Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you. Seventh Ward, Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. First and foremost, I want to thank all the residents at the Garden House Apartments who participated in Mother's Day breakfast. It was a success. Hopefully we'll have another one next year. Also, I want to let the residents know the Seventh Ward Monthly Meeting, unfortunately for June, will be canceled due to the availability of the facilities per the owner. We will have the July meeting on July the 20th, Saturday, July the 20th, from 10:00 AM to noon, so please make the adjustment. If you have any questions on that, please contact the office at 708-891-8197 or email at asmith@calumetcity.org. Also, I want to continue to encourage the residents to report any suspicious activity along with vacant properties. Our city departments are actually working fairly aggressively on the current issues, so we work them as quickly as we receive them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I have a number eight informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Can I have a motion to accept and place those items? Item 8A?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
New Business Action Items 9, 1 through 10. Can I have a motion to accept the business action items 9, 1 through 10?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Wilson? Yes.
Yes. Building permits, are there any questions regards to building permits? If not, can I have a motion to approve building permits? Second. Alder Woman Wilson, motion, second by Alderman Smith. Building permits with fences, is there any questions about the variance of 307 Saginaw in the Second Ward?
No, I agree with that. I'm asking the council to, please, uproot that.
Okay. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Gardner. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinances and Resolutions, Agenda Item 12, 1 through, 1, 2, and 3.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Items 12, 1, 2, and 3 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Oh, second, sorry, second.
Roll call.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
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 All right. Financial matters, 13, 1 through 20. Any questions regarding financial matters 1 through 20?
Mayor Pro Temp, I would like to make a motion to table Item 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor? A roll call?
Is that a roll call?
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve financial matters 1 through 16 and 18 through 20?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson? Wilson? Alderman Wilson? Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wilson?
We lost her. She lost, we lost her again. All right. Unfinished business, Alderman Smith?
Nothing this time, Mayor Pro Temp.
Alderman Patton, any unfinished?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Pro Temp.
Thank you. Alderman Gardner?
Yes. Real quick, I forgot to mention, those of you that are on the 2024 Sidewalk List, the list is now finalized. Anyone that calls afterwards, after this point, will be placed on the 2025 Sidewalk Repair List. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Unfinished for the Fourth Ward. There is a reconnaissance for the sidewalk and driveways tomorrow with the engineers and Public Works, so that project is moving, moving along, and we hope to get started. When are we going to start construction on sidewalks?
The plan right now is we are vetting the sidewalk locations with the Aldermen and then also too with Public Works. After it's vetted, we'll need a few weeks to get the bid documents finalized and then we have to provide information to IDOT, and our intention is to try and get it on, ready for bid by the end of June, so that way I can go out and we could get proposals to do the work. So I would anticipate work would probably begin in August, probably August 1st, and then carry into the fall.
Okay. Thank you. Speed bumps, as far as the Fourth Ward, obviously, they are working east to west, so they will start to go down sometime in the next couple of, couple of weeks. Again, I say this every year, they will not go on every street. That is impossible for us to do and still allow for our public safety departments to travel throughout the city without damaging cars and also traveling. With speed bumps everywhere, it slows down the response time and you just never know when they need to get to you as the public, so just keep that in mind moving forward. So I want to thank Sunrise for their sponsorship of the Mother's Day Event. It was a great event. I appreciate their sponsorship. Many people attended and many, many people were very happy with the service. And that is it for the Fourth Ward. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I am just going to echo the statements of Alderman Williams as it relates to the speed bumps with the Third Ward, and that is all.
Thank you, Alder Woman. Oh, she's not here with us any longer. Alderman Navarrete?
Nothing this evening, Mayor Pro Temp. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, there is no executive session tonight, so can I have a meeting to adjourn? I mean, a motion to adjourn, sorry.
So moved. So moved. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.